I'm still not, like, I can't get a microphone. I know. We do, but we can't find.
Okay, we will go ahead and call mean to order. It's Thursday, August 27, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will dispense with all of our normal stuff and we will go right into trying to come up with the solution for community testing. So, I don't know how we want to start.
Well, we've obviously been talking quite a bit outside of, you know, the county with Christie's input. I guess we can give you kind of an update on where we're at, or where we believe we are. So, just some background, obviously, the two hospitals
We're gonna get there.
currently have testing sites. It's becoming more and more difficult for us to maintain those for multiple reasons, so I'll get into in a second. But I think the starting point may be just to talk about the different types of patients coming there. So, we obviously are sending our own patients, you know, hospitals have patients, clinic patients have our own that are coming there. So, those are patients that we own. We're gonna continue testing regardless of what happens. The other patient types that are coming there are more community-based type testing. We have schools sending patients over, we have employers sending patients, we have dental offices sending patients. Those are more community-based types of things that aren't going through the normal pass-up point here. So, that latter population that we're talking about, trying to get a community site set up for, by no means are any of the healthcare providers in the community trying to shirk our duty and say, "We don't want to do this anymore, somebody else do it." We're just trying to find a solution for those that aren't already our patients within our organizations. So, I think it's an important distinction to make, to, you know, understand who we're talking about testing. So, getting into why we're interested in having a community, why type of site setup. Testing supplies are becoming more and more scarce. Hospitals are really at risk of being unable to provide. Our understanding of how that's prioritized, because, you know, we could order however many testing supplies we wanted to get, but we're only gonna get what we're allocated for, and that allocation is based on our own population of patients, as I just pointed out. Those additional tests that are needed, they're not really, you know, deeming that we are allocated for that amount of testing supplies. So, that's probably the biggest issue that we have concern about moving forward, especially schools are starting back and, you know, the community is kind of open back up, and we think the testing will probably increase instead of decrease. While at the same time, our testing suppliers are becoming less and less available to us. So, the belief is opening up a third, you know, community-based testing that has their own access to testing supplies is probably gonna be significant benefit to the community and probably help us get to the point where we're not gonna be able to provide. And then on top of that, obviously, the hospitals have opened back up to their full services, electric procedures are back online. We're starting to see as many patients as we were at one point, so the manpower to the staff of those tents is becoming extremely difficult to manage as well. So, anyway, pulling a grip together to talk about this, what, how can we work together to do a joint, single testing site for those community-based patients that need to be tested for whatever reason? We think that's going to continue to increase, as I've already said. The challenge, though, is how to set that up under a single legal entity that doesn't have conflict of interest. So, that's kind of the direction why we were talking to Christie about it. Could that be housed under the Cole County Health Department? Doing all the things I already said, get staffing on board, get access to supplies. Christie's indicated there's probably some roadblocks there from an HR perspective.
Well, in a testing supply perspective, I don't know of any allocation that we can get for Yeah, I don't know of any allocation that we can get for testing. We would have to order them just like the other entities. I don't have
And I want to make sure we're clear on that, too. You know, we order supplies because we have vendors that are set up. Those vendors are guided by government rules with how many supplies can be distributed to whoever's ordering. The allocation is really guided by that, so we could order a million and we'd get 100, you know, it's based on our average use in our patient population that we quote-unquote have as healthcare providers. It sounds like if we're reading the literature on the allocation methodology, that unfortunately, because of the size of our community, the prevalence in our community, that the healthcare organizations themselves are probably at the very end of that priority list. We do believe that some of our government types agencies are being allotted more supplies than even our own local healthcare providers are. We don't know that yet until we actually went out and applied for it, but it looks like that is very significant potential that, you know, as the county, we went after supplies, we might actually have better access to it.
So, we could set up a testing site and then not have the test kits to do the testing, is what you're saying, or?
Yeah, I'm saying that if, so the two hospitals are already ordering and getting the supplies that they can get. If we set up a third entity who can also go after supplies and have an allocation that we, as a community, could probably have access to more supplies than we currently do. Does that make sense to you?
So, do we have to set up a third entity to request supplies from the county, or?
So, a couple of things. Again, going back on history, if Christie's saying from an HR perspective, it's not a possibility for the county to do that, then we're already talking, okay, we still believe that the community deserves to have a testing site. If the hospitals are gonna be to the point where they can no longer do it because of supply availability, then, okay, maybe we exclude the county and set up our own entity. Now, the challenge with that is, we may be starting from scratch, it's gonna take some time. I mean, it hasn't happened overnight to set up a legal entity that can, you know, oversee a program like this. So, knowing how tight our testing supplies are, there could be a gap in service to the community at some point, because we may not be able to provide it. It would be easier to set up that under an existing entity, which is why we've been talking to Christie, that we don't fully understand the roadblocks from the HR perspective there either. We know that there's cares something available, so we're not worried too much about that. You know, there's legal things to work through with that and the application and things like that. But really getting that umbrella organization that already exists would make getting the community testing site expedited much more quickly. Am I missing anything?
No, I don't think so. I think the big thing, as we discussed, is it would take somewhere about 60, minimum 90 days, maybe longer, to set up an entity in and of itself, or an incorporated group, some type of joint venture. It would take a long time to do that. What we were maybe suggesting is that if the county could be kind of the keeper of, if you will, of this project, then they could contract employees from us, or we could, like, currently, we have a number of people working at, about eight people a day is what works at our test site. And those eight people, if we could take some of those people coming through, out of that, we would have some people to send the county to do some of the testing. We have been doing between 140 and 170 tests a day. Only about anywhere from 40 to 50 of those are our patients. The rest of them are dental cases. We've had people from Columbia, we've had people from St. Louis, we've had lots of dental cases that come to us. And so, we're testing people that we never see in our facility. And part of the problem is, is we also have some responsibility for follow-up. If the county does that, then we, they have to put a doctor's name down that would get the results, and they would be responsible for follow-up. So, it's not just the test kits, and the test kits we're allotted are allotted by the numbers that we've used during the past months or year. That's how we get our supplies. Well, our supplies are based on the patients that we've had over the last year in our facility. So, if we've only used six boxes of masks, for instance, six boxes is what we get. We don't get 10 because we're using more. That's just the way that system works, and that, that is law, that's related to regulation and laws. To where, as we understand it, other entities such as EMS and healthcare, or County Health Commission, or departments and those can order supplies and get them. They're not allocated a certain amount. Now, as you know, that depends on what you read, where you read it, it doesn't always read the same, and it's kind of muddy. So, we don't know all of that. You all would have a better, or Christie would have a better idea of what that means. Anyway, we would just really love, we think that we have a responsibility to the community. I mean, I don't think any of us say that we don't have that responsibility. But I'm also concerned that we have a lot of people in healthcare in this community who's willing to help. We just need somebody who has the wherewithal or has the authority, if you will, to move forward with this, because we are very close to being beyond what we can manage. And the hospitals probably very soon will be getting point-of-care. We have some of the point-of-care now. But again, because we have not been allocated that over the year, test supplies are really short for that, so we can't do point-of-care. But there'll come a time when we can do that, because we're new users to that, so they'll allow us more of that. And then we won't have a need anymore to test in the, out of the hospital. And we want to get this set up so that that doesn't leave all those other people coming that are not our patients high and dry, because we think we do have a responsibility to them, but we need some help.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, you know, we're telling the story and we're saying we want to support the community. Our preference would be to come across to the community that we're working together with the county. So, that's one of our main goals, too. I want to make sure we're clear on that, too.
That's a message we want to send to our community, that as healthcare people, we can work together to provide what it is the community needs. Not that it's the hospitals or the community healths, or the health departments, all of us working together to reach a goal. That's why we came in June.
So, it sounds like really the issue is the 100-plus people that aren't your patients that you're testing every day. So, can you, can you explain a little bit more about, you know, what's the criteria for someone to get tested? Are you seeing people being tested multiple times, and then why, why is everybody not paying to get tested? Regardless of whether the dentist sends you, or the school sends you, or an employer sends you, but why would everybody not have to pay for a service?
So, a couple of things with that. And it's a great question, by the way. So, the hospitals are getting to the point, and I'll just be honest, St. Mary's has kind of already gotten to that point, that we are only testing people that are positive. I'm not saying they're symptomatic.
Right.
Make sure I'm using the right terminology here. And if you think about it this way, the healthcare organizations that are actually, that are our patients, just like I've said, we would only treat someone who has symptoms or has been exposed to somebody that is positive, because we're making decisions for that patient, you know, okay, do I need to quarantine you? Do I need to do this, that, and the other? So, action is being taken based on that test. Other community people coming in, so like the dentists, for example, is action being taken based on that test? Sort of. The dentist probably would not proceed with a procedure if they tested positive, so there's a reason for the test. Does that have any bearing on what we're doing over on the hospital side? No, it's literally just to allow that patient to get in and have a dental procedure. As healthcare providers, we do believe that dental procedures are pretty high-risk, you know, the drills, the suction, the air that's being used, aerosolizing particles in the air that could be spread to somebody else. You know, we could have a massive community outbreak just from a positive patient in a dental office that may be exposing other people. Then go out and expose other people, so yes, it's important. But those are those community-based testing things that we're providing a service to the community just so they can proceed with their everyday life. You know, the employers that are sending patients over, schools that are sending kids over to be tested prior to going to school, you know, we're not necessarily doing anything other than getting them a test so they can proceed with their normal activities. Are we making healthcare decisions based on that test? No. Do we believe this should probably continue? In most cases, yes. I mean, like I said, we've got to continue with life and give people the ability to go out and do that versus not get my dental procedure or not go to school. Is that a normal part of what we do as hospitals and healthcare providers? Typically not. Would we go ahead and continue doing that if supply issues weren't a concern? Probably. Because it's a concern, we feel like we need to find another alternative for our community. I don't know. Did I answer your question, Chris?
Well, so
Because it's not an easy
No, and obviously, I'm an employer, and I mean, obviously, I have to have people drug-tested. I don't see it as any different, really. I mean, if I'm sending someone there, I need to pay a fee, okay? So, regardless, if I want them tested for COVID, or I want them tested for alcohol, or drugs, or anything else, why am I not paying a fee?
So, here's how, here's how the healthcare providers would look at a patient being sent over. Don't send it over to the tent, send it to a physician's office. We'll take you on as a patient, we'll get you tested just like a physical for going to school. That's how we would view it.
Right.
Of course, then you have Donald Trump and a bunch of other, you know, politicians out there saying, "Well, go get tested, it's free, it's no problem."
It's not free.
So, right.
It's not free. I mean, the $9 million we got is not free money.
Absolutely.
I mean, so, it's, it's, it's my money, it's your money, it's everybody's money.
But I'm explaining what the mindset of the people coming to
I know, I know. I get it. I mean, just like the checks that we all got, you know.
And this is, this is why we're having the conversation, because we, as healthcare providers, don't want to take the stance, well, we're only gonna take testing on if you come in and see a physician and, you know, become a patient. But we may have to.
And there's a lot of people in this county who can't afford to pay for that test, don't have third-party pay or any type of insurance, and literally cannot afford to do that. We cannot allow them to go out and infect many, many other people. But there are people who cannot afford to have the test. And I think even if they could pay for it, it doesn't take care of our need. We're, we're kind of close to maximum capacity where we are and how we're testing. And our concern is with schools started, we're seeing even a more uptake, you know, they go from 120 to 140, now we're at 170. We're seeing more and more, and we just, I don't know if you guys have driven by where our test site is, over there by Freeman Mortuary, but it's becoming a problem for traffic in the street, because we just, and we have nowhere else to go at this point in time. So, it's a matter of how do we get people through more quickly, how do we do something different? I know that we had talked at one time when we were here in June about using the old Cole County site out on Dix Road, didn't it? Or Destra Drive, and trying to get them out of that pretty fast lane of traffic on Madison. So, those are issues, too, but we do have quite a number of people who could not come up with cash to pay that.
We were talking about our physicians. You know, when we get into the flu season, I didn't have the flu last, this, last year, the year before I did, and I went in, you know, they put a mask on you and they swab your nose for influenza A and B. Can the doctor, at the same time you're there being tested for influenza, can they, are they able to do the COVID as well? I mean, I'm
They can, and we've talked about that, even doing it at the test site. What we're trying to do is keep them out of the offices where there are lots of other people. That's why we have that test site. We're really, we don't want them coming into the physician offices and infecting however many might be in that physician offices and/or the staff. We're as concerned about the staff as we are the people coming in, because we can't afford to lose half of our staff because they're positive. And keep in mind, we lose them for two weeks when that happens, at least two weeks when that happens. That's a long time to have a half dozen or a dozen nurses out, and, or anybody, not just nurses, the lab techs, the cleaning crew. I mean, it's a lot of people that, every time we bring somebody into the, to the hospitals to test them, or bring them into whatever office at the Community Health Center, too, when we bring them in to test them, we put everybody that's in that building at risk.
So, when you, you were talking about, like, doing a third site at the old health, so you would continue to operate your testing on Madison? Or everything would move to one site?
Well, we've looked at it both ways, as keeping our test site going are, probably by that time, we'd be at point-of-care testing in the hospital. So, we would keep those patients of ours in the hospital that would be coming in the next day or two for a surgery or a procedure, anyway, and we do point-of-care testing in there. That's a quick test, and send everybody else to our common area.
So, it'd be just one site?
Yes.
Long-term, that's the ideal situation, yeah.
Of course, it wouldn't happen like a switch overnight, that would have to be a gradual thing.
So, you could, could you help man, help man the site then? See, that's the problem we've got with the health department. We don't have the staff to do it.
And we didn't either. That's, we had to hire staff to do that. So, we would have extra staff, because again, we wouldn't be seeing as many, we went from four people over there to six people, now to eight people, that we've had to hire extra. We've hired them as temporary employees to man that site. Well, if we don't, if we've got two-thirds of them, I don't know if that calculation, but quite a few of them going to another site, then we would have people that you could contract from us. Or that the county, whoever you is. I'm not sure who that is anymore.
So, really, at this point, you guys are asking for either an additional site or a new site, not just supplies, or possibly us paying for the uninsured people to be tested. You're asking for an additional site?
Well, I'm not sure that you couldn't use one of our sites. I mean, I don't know what all those rules are about. You know, I know that if we do this, if we would, we would have to lease, if we were doing it as an entity, we'd have to lease, you just couldn't let us use it. We'd have to lease that. I don't know what all those rules are.
Well, I think if you, we could operate the building out of cares as far as utilities and things like that, and let you all use it, I think that's a possibility. But I'm saying, like, if we helped you get supplies, or paid for the people that are uninsured at your current testing sites, would that be something that would help you, or is it really the need of having to move and shift because you're overwhelmed and you can't handle the people coming in?
Well, the only other thing I can think of that we haven't talked about here, which we have, obviously, and, so there's some duplication. I'm sorry. Forget I'm on between the two sites. So, it would be a much more efficient process to have a single site that, you know, both hospitals are providing staff for, whatever is needed, versus operating two independent sites. So, a part of the long-term vision here, too, is to be more efficient with what we're providing to the community, too, by having a single site under a single, you know, legal entity.
So, is my understanding from our last meeting that St. Mary's really didn't have extra staff to lead to the site?
So, we have posted, as I said, we've posted positions, we've not been able to hire yet, but, you know, our plan is just like Capitol Region to staff long-term. You know, as I already said here today, with services starting back up basically full speed at both hospitals, the extra staff that we had because the services have been stopped are being put back to work in their normal jobs. We've been able to scrape together enough, you know, team members to staff it at this point, but we have now recognized we can't do that, we're gonna have to hire as well. Which, you know, we're obviously doing as soon as we can get recruitment done, just like Capitol Region is.
When you're saying long-term, you know, this is gonna end in December, so you're saying just till December, or you all wanting this to go on past December? And then what is the plan for after December?
We don't know that. I wish we could answer that question, Donna. I mean, I hope it's over by December, but we, none of us know that.
Well, the care is funding ends in December.
Right, right, but I, what I'm saying is, none of us knows what that means. I don't know if they'll do another funding round, I don't know that. Sometimes they do that, I have no idea, but we could be no farther behind in December than we are right now. It can't get worse than, well, I guess it could, we could be doing a lot more. But the point, you know, there, my biggest concern is we're gonna be to the point, both of the hospitals, and you guys have been doing quite a bit, too, that we're gonna be to the point where we have no place for these people to go. And that's gonna create, I think, some, a lot of tension between our consumers in this community, because we're not providing them with what they think they need. And of course, they listen to TV, and they do get the message that this is free testing, and everybody could be tested.
Anybody, don't have to be symptomatic.
And we have, we have to have a doctor's order to do the testing. People just can't go to any of these sites to do the testing. So, we still have some control over that. I don't know if we're gonna ever be mandated, you know, one time we were told that we would be mandated to do testing so much in each community. I don't know if that's still
I doubt it, and CDC changed their guidelines for close contacts to be tested, too, just earlier this week. You don't need, everyone doesn't need to be tested.
Yeah, and we haven't been doing that. You have to be symptomatic to be tested. So, that's a pretty narrow population.
If all doctors would go by that and not write those orders for asymptomatic, too, because I know that there are, that's happening, too, and so
It is, unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Well, Dr. Randall Williams yesterday did say he did not, he did not want to go by the CDC.
I know, but
So, I mean, you get that message as well, so, as a doctor myself, it is, it's conflicting, I mean, we are up lifted every single day with every single patient.
We talk to all of those patients, so I understand, I, you know, we kind of have to tell them what we, what we know, too, is that at this time, it has to be a doctor's order, you have to be symptomatic, and we do not encourage asymptomatic people to get tested just because, because we do tell them that our resources in this community are limited, and you could get tested today and be negative, but then three days from now, you end up with a cough, sore throat, you need to get tested again, so you just had two tests within a week that, you know, so So, that's kind of where we are.
So, obviously, we wanted to come here today and have this conversation to get us, an idea of what the commission's stance is, so we have, we have that question, too.
So, obviously, I think if people can afford to pay for the test, I think they should pay. If dentists are sending people to your facility, someone should pay. I mean, if you're having an elective dental procedure, you're paying for that, and you need to pay for the test so that you don't infect somebody. I mean, anybody that has the ability to pay should be paying for the test. It's a service, it's not free.
Well, Chris, I want to make sure that you understand that we do file for those that have insurance and things, and we do get some money for that. I want to make sure that you're aware this isn't just flat out. And if we take that money, remember, we can only charge, depending on what their, who their carrier is. If we get, take any money from them, then we have to write the rest of it off on someone. So, you know, we make it $100, we make it $70, it depends on who their carriers are, and then we, we can't charge them.
And that's something we haven't talked about here, you know, the labs, the testing supplies, the staff, even for those that we're getting reimbursed for, we're still taking a significant loss on. So, just because it's being paid for doesn't mean costs are being covered, either, which I know you understand.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, so, I mean, so that's like a co-pay, so maybe somebody should pay the rest. I don't know what that is, but you know, I, I get it. I mean, if it costs you 150 bucks, you need 150 bucks. You don't need 90 or 100, you need to cover your costs. And so, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. I mean, I don't mind helping community people out, but obviously, we talked the other day about Jamestown School, and we didn't fund them because their school's not in Cole because their school's not in Coal County. Well, you said people are coming in from all over the place, okay? So our allotment was for Coal County. So really, if people are coming from other counties, well, maybe those counties should pay.
We agree with you.
We do. And here's the other thing, you know, we've been talking about the operational logistics here. But if we get this going, the thing you're gonna have to do, who are we serving? I think that's part of the.
Sure.
What's the criteria for being tested? I think we need to establish that. Because as we've already established here, it's kind of all over the place, you know. As a joint community entity, we could establish those rules for ourselves and, you know, limit to whatever we need to limit. We haven't gotten to that detail yet because we don't even know if it's gonna be feasible.
And see, the counties around us do not have, I mean, Montauk County, you know, when they had their, you know, they have no facilities to do testing. Osage County doesn't, you know, Mary's County doesn't. So it's either come here or go to Columbia, I would assume, because they just don't, you know, they have a health department, but their health departments, we don't do testing. So it's, it's like, so where do you come? You come to the hospitals. And so, I mean, we're gonna have Montauk and Osage and.
Well, and keep in mind, they are in our service area.
Yeah, yeah.
They are, they are considered for both of our hospitals, our service area. So we are expected to provide services for those people. Now, could we build the county for, and they could use their cares money? Cause they all got some. I'm not, I'm not sure that we could even legally do that. I don't know that.
Most don't work in this county.
Yeah. I know Christie's talked, been talking with Scott Clardy at, at Boone County Health Department on what they're gonna do. And right now, their hospitals are doing all the testing, but.
Well, they've recently closed down one of their, MU's closed down one of their tests. But they also have, you know, real quick fifteen minute point of care testing now too. The thing that we're looking to various.
Well, they had recommended, she, that we reach out to Boone County, Boone Hospital. And they did come back with a, could assist Coal County in their testing needs. If we can use your space, I believe we could manage having a collection site Monday, Wednesday, Friday for a set number of hours, whatever you felt was the most convenient for your type of patient. We would need to cover our costs for supplies and labor. If the patient does not have insurance, I propose we do what we are doing here in Boone County, which is to send the health department, the total number of uninsured patients we tested, and they reimburse us the cost of the test processing at a hundred and fifty dollars. We took, this took effect August 4th here in Boone County, and they're using cares funding for those expenses. So they're saying, they see two hundred patients, a seven hour shift. They staff it with two people averaging about sixteen to eighteen dollars an hour. So, cause again, we don't have, we don't have the staffing to do it, you know.
You must do some pre-registration and stuff too because you couldn't see that many patients an hour that we were currently doing it. So, I mean, and there's no reason, we talked about that even, about pre-registration and having appointments. That would be ideal, but we need a software package to be able to do that. And that's what Green County, we've called a number of counties, that's what Green County did. They actually put, people were able to, to go online and sign up for time to come and be tested. And then they filled out their insurance and their name and a number of things before they ever got there, which speeds up that process significantly. And then they had to have, of course, their doctor's order.
How many people do you have coming back, repeat offenders that just?
Not too many, or we don't have too many. We have some. A lot of times, they're either very nervous or their employers keep sending them back. Or they want two negatives before they allow them to come back to work. One of our biggest issues in, in the past, and we've kinda worked on this, has been our nursing homes. Anytime that a patient comes in the hospital, they want them tested before they go back to the nursing home. And, you know, you kind of understand that, but then they quarantine them anyway. And you keep them and it takes two to three days minimum to get our test back. And we have them in the hospital being exposed to all kinds of things. So we test them on Monday. They could be positive by Wednesday or Thursday when we send them out. So it's just kind of this vicious cycle that just keeps on giving.
I, I'd say at least for those in the tent though, the ones that are repeat offenders, as you said, are more driven by employers than it is the patient themselves.
How can we get the employers to understand that number one, the testing supplies? And I've tried to talk to several employees and let them know this is not necessary. They're not considered contagious once we release them. They don't need that test and you're wasting supplies. You need a doctor's order. So they need to find a doctor who will order it, a doctor who will follow up with them. The lab, then they'll do it. And then also that the employer needs to pay for it. But how can, I mean, I have talked, I don't have any of the employers and they just don't believe it. And I try to send them the CDC stuff and they just, they think that they know better. And so, I mean, can we refuse to do those, if we refuse to test, what's gonna happen with those employees then? If people just say, we're not, we're not doing the retest just to go back to work?
They've not been able to go back to work for two weeks.
Okay, but two weeks, I mean, but is it two weeks or is it two months or is it three? You know, what is it gonna be? Because they could test positive for up to two to three months. We've seen it.
We have, but that's what we have seen now, whether or not that's true for everybody. But the employees who've come, who've been sent by employers, some of those for two tests, they are not allowed to go back to work until they either have a negative or it's been two weeks.
Or it's been two weeks after that, ten days.
Which are not the guidelines that we have. And I think the other thing that we have to remember is we are constantly confused, not only as healthcare people, but as a community, because CDC keeps changing things. So, you know, I don't know if you guys have read the most recent polls out there for the state of Missouri, but the state of Missouri doesn't listen to CDC anymore. They look to their healthcare providers for their information of what they need. That's why we have worked very, very hard as entities to send the same message. Mike and Crystal and even JCMG groups, we get together and decide what it is we're gonna put out there because we want them getting the same message so there's no confusion. We've worked very hard since February.
So you all give the same message that we, cause then we may be giving to, I mean, are we giving different messages? Because when people call us, this, you know, we're telling them certain things and we are telling the same people. And I got a call from a St. Mary's doc yesterday who was upset. But I think we kinda talked her down. I think we kinda got her straightened out. She was given some misinformation too, but you know, so, cause we had doctors say, oh, we've had people call us now. We know people don't always tell the truth. That will say, oh, I saw my doctor because I'm just a contact. If I test negative and I'm fever free, I can go back to school. I can go back to work. Whatever. Like, oh, no, that is not the case. But, you know, so we all, everybody in the health department with all the physicians and all the, you know, we all need to be on the same page, but we are going by still the CDC guidelines that we've been, been told.
Well, we certainly try to do that, but you have to really be careful to stay up on that cause what they say this morning may not be the same as what they say this afternoon.
I know, I know. We can tell somebody one thing, first of all, it's seventy-two hours. They had to be fever free. So that's what we were telling everybody. Then all of a sudden, one day, they changed it to twenty-four. Oh, well, now it's not seventy-two, it's twenty-four. And yeah, you're right. I mean, we have to try to be on those things too. And so it is, it is very difficult and, but these employers, I just, I don't know how. Cause that's one thing that I think that we can try and put a stop to. And if people say, we're not gonna test you if you have to be off for two weeks. Isn't there a coronavirus care act or something that they still have to pay their employees at least two thirds?
No, some people are doing that. That, that's an option. People do not, that's a misconception out there. You do not have to pay your employees for that.
So in that circumstance with the employer, are you billing the employer that's requiring the test if they're not symptomatic at that point? Or are you billing the person's insurance when they're coming in and giving them?
We would only bill whatever provider they have. We don't have legal access to bill an employer unless we had a contract with them.
Therein lies yet another problem.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I see some.
That's what we've told the employers. I think you need to pay for them for these people because their insurance may not pay for a second test or a third test or a fourth test.
Right.
And that's what I've tried to tell, you know, we've talked to many, many employers, but they.
And to answer your question, I don't know that, no matter, you can talk to your blue in the face. I don't know that you'll ever get that across. Because we also have people who do not believe that they need to be social distancing, wearing masks, washing hands. I had an employee call me from a place here in town where I guess they had a tornado warning a few weeks ago. I guess I was in my office. I don't know where I was. I missed it entirely. But that they put over five hundred people in a very, very small area of where they worked. And there were people coughing. There was a, three people ended up positive. They got the results back after they did it before. They got it back after they put them all. And they didn't keep them off work until they got the results back. And they wanted to know what they needed to do. And I said, watch for these symptoms and, you know, go to your physician, call your physician if you have any. But what do you tell those people? Because we have people who do not believe this is a deal.
Well, the other thing that we've talked about as a group, aside from being here today, is, you know, if we got this entity established, could we start doing some public service announcement types of things together jointly to address the things we're talking about here? I mean, that makes sense. I know the mayor reached out and said, can we get together and do some of this? I mean, we're, we're looking at those options and I think probably do need to start doing that, doing some public forums, you know, getting people educated, getting, asking the right questions so we can answer them.
It's a tough deal.
It is.
You know, you got seventy-seven NFL football players that test positive and now all of a sudden, sudden, they're negative. So, I mean, it doesn't help the cause to say, okay, all these tests were false positives. I mean, so, you know, what do people trust? I mean, we keep changing the criteria all the time. So is it masks? Is it not masks? Is it social distancing? What is it? And, I mean, nobody really knows how it's spread, to be real honest. I mean, is it a droplet? Is it, what is it?
Well, and that's just it, you know, as I've already said, I know I'm repeating myself, but, you know, the, the healthcare organizations, as we've said multiple times, would only, you know, treat or isolate someone if they're symptomatic, those types of things. You know, we're gonna take action based on either the test or the symptoms or whatever. But the general public, social distancing, obviously, masks, hand hygiene, those are things that we all need to be doing, you know, to, you know, be good stewards of our own community. But, you know, testing because I need to go to work, I need to get my teeth. I mean, those things we've already talked about, yeah, there's maybe some legitimacy to that. But, you know, as far as the healthcare side of things go, we're really not gonna take action based on real things.
If we would do this community thing, which I, I think it's a great idea, I really do. But who would oversee it? Who would be the one? Because, I mean, would we have to hire somebody to come in and oversee that? Cause we don't have time. You all don't have time to be the leader. Then we have to think about the labs. Who's all gonna come? You all have your contract labs contracted and St. Mary's has their labs. But for those people that fall through the cracks that are not St. Mary's or Capital Region, what lab and who's gonna have that contract with those labs? And then, those are my two concerns with it because we'd have to have somebody that had that contract with the other lab and then we'd have to set all that up. And that's not a big deal to set up, I know. But who would be that person that would be in charge of those outside of St. Mary's and Capital Region type thing?
So I think you've hit on all the points that we've already been talking about, which is, yes, you're gonna need someone to supervise it. We're gonna need to establish relationships with labs. We're gonna need to establish relationships with the vendors that supply the testing kits. But that all becomes much easier for the community if it's all housed under one legal entity.
Rather than all of us doing.
Those are all things we're.
And I get that, but who would be like, I mean, so we're just gonna have to hire somebody temporarily till the end of December? Or is it somebody from, you know, because that's, that's my thing. And that's what I think I'd ask at the first meeting. I didn't really get any answers, so.
Well, I don't think we know all of that yet because we don't know what we have to do yet. I mean, we've got a good idea. We've worked up a budget. We've done all of that, but I think.
Did that budget include that person to oversee it and everything? A person for that?
Yes, but I, but I think the, the big thing is, as we've discussed this, and I spent some time with our attorneys trying to go over how can we do this? And whether it's a joint venture, there's lots of different ways to do it, whether it's a, an ink or any of those, it takes so much time that we'll be in December before. So his suggestion, in all honesty, was that Coal County, because you're already here and established as a community person, that if you could oversee it and then contract people from the hospital or whatever you legally have to do. And he said, I don't know that law that well, so I can't tell you. But contract people from the hospitals, from the community health center, from JCMG to do X, Y, and Z. And then it would be a matter of just getting those contracts into place versus having to set up another corporation or joint venture or any of that. That was his suggestion.
Isn't that kind of what we did earlier?
That's, yes.
And it all fell through?
Yes.
I have all those contracts.
Yes, yes, that's exactly.
Yeah, it fell through because a lot of the entities could not send staff, like.
Right.
At St. Mary's, cause of, Crystal can't send staff because of insurance.
And I'm not screaming what fell through. I'm just saying, we already have this in place so it shouldn't take too long if that's the route everyone decides to pursue. Because I, I have the documents.
I think what it is is gonna get those.
I think we're in a different place now.
I was gonna say, I don't think we're talking about the same thing we were previously.
Well, pretty much.
What's the difference?
Well, the, the difference is, and why, why it fell through was, we were still talking about using the two hospitals' individual medical records, the path for lab results, going through that, which meant that we were not eliminating duplication. We would still have duplicated processes with registration, things like that, so.
So we're gonna duplicate a service?
So the, the proposal here is to have a separate registration software program that allows us to eliminate the duplication.
We don't have that registration process, so we would have to purchase some sort of system and probably put it out for bid and that takes what, two or three months?
We, we've been talking about the SOLVE program that JCMG is using. We actually.
Yeah, it looked pretty, I mean, it looked like a pretty good system, I think, but.
And they were willing to help us get on board with that. I mean, everybody was trying to say what I can contribute. So while Crystal may not have the staff to do that, there may be some other things. I know we have staff because once we don't have the big, all that going to the one site, then we will have staff to send.
Cause I think that was our thing, is that hiring staff for us was gonna be, we had said that you all said that we didn't think we could do that. But if you all had the staff, I think that was a, part of the thing is to get the staff here. And I thought we had said that we were gonna have to hire staff, or that this thing was gonna have to hire staff.
Well, at one point, when we only had two and four, yes, but now we have eight because our numbers have grown so significantly. So up until the first of July, that was probably true, maybe mid-July.
So are we any closer to coming up with a solution to get this done? Or, I mean, cause obviously, we, we can't do it. I mean, if we increase testing, we're gonna put more burden on our health department. And we're already trying to hire people to do contact tracing. And, I mean, they've got enough to do with just that, so. You know, if there's a solution, I think we're willing to help, but we just don't know where it's at.
Well, I, I guess to simplify, maybe oversimplify what the, the request is. You know, we're asking, do we still have the possibility of housing a program like this, contracted employees, whatever that looks like, under Coal County? And if not, okay, then that gives us what direction we need to go. We can pursue, it's gonna be a long-term thing, as Glenn has pointed out. We can pursue, it's going to be a long-term thing, as Glenn has pointed out, it can take 90 days or longer, but we can pursue the other route. We just need to know what the county is willing to support. Am I oversimplifying that? Okay. I mean, there's obviously a lot of unknowns we've got to figure out, there's details, but, you know, overall, it's either we pursue a path of having Cole County being the legal entity that houses this, or we pursue another path. I mean, it's, it's probably oversimplifying it, but that's really what we're here to talk about today. And it's something you may not be able to answer right now.
I, I like the concept. Again, I have to be very careful, but I think maybe we need to talk to Christie, you know, we need to talk to Christie and Donna and, and see if it works. We've got the location, we've got CARE money that can be used for this, that's what it's for, so.
So you need some time to get back to us, is that what you're saying?
I thi- I think, I think so.
Okay.
Well, I don't know what's changed since June or whatever, how things have changed, all of a sudden now we can contract with you. Back then, we couldn't. Y'all talk like this supply allocation is not there, but I don't understand how we're supposed to get it. If you all can't, from what I understand, some of the other entities are not having problems with supplies. I think it's just going to be a nightmare if we try and run it. I don't have a problem using the old health building and supplying it. We've got CARES Act money, so you can apply for some of that. From what I understand, Cap Region got $6 million, I don't know what St. Mary's got. So, I just, we're going to be throwing way too much on our health department, and there's no way with the staff that we've got that we can do anything close to even overseeing the operation. So, I mean, apart from using the old health department building, I don't know what all we've got to, to offer. Because they've got their hands full already. I know that's not the answer you want to hear, but I really think you all already know what you're doing and how to do it. You all get together and if you can figure out-
So, to be clear, Jeff, we're planning to pursue this either way. The thing that makes it easier for the organizations in town, you know, we're competing businesses, so there's conflict of interest involved that we have to find a legal way to work around. So, you know, we're not saying Cole County takes on all the responsibility, we're talking about, okay, we've got some resources we can provide as far as staffing goes. But to have that joint grouping together of the, the staff and those resources from the competing businesses, it's easier to house that under a separate legal entity. It takes all the conflict of interest out of the equation. That's, that's what we're really asking for. We're not saying we're washing our hands of it, and here you are, Cole County, go, go have fun with this. That's not what we're proposing. We're proposing to find a fairly efficient way to get to this overseeing legal body that we can all contribute resources to. Am I saying that right?
Yeah. You're talking about like a third-party entity-
Correct.
Funded by the county, not really associated with-
Well, with CARES money.
Right, right. But I mean, not necessarily the health department, but a third party that we could contract with that could maybe do that.
Correct. And, and the other path that Glenn just talked about is, okay, if, if Cole County can't be that legal entity, to be the umbrella for us, then we could look for something else, establish our own or whatever. The reason that is not the option we would prefer is because it takes so long. You know, by the time we got all the legal work done on that-
It's 90 days.
With a, an organization that does not exist today, we just know it's not the right thing for the community.
Is something that Boone could provide to be the entity that, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, they offered that-
That was, I just thought, I just thought that was-
Well, then just have them come in and do it. Why pay somebody to oversee somebody else doing it? That don't make sense. It just doesn't make any sense at all. If you're going to do it, then we hire them to come in and do it. I don't, I don't think that's our, our deal to be hiring people to come in and test it. We've already got it being done, so.
Well, it's being done, but to be clear-
Individual hospitals.
I don't know that we can sustain it.
Our numbers have changed a heck of a lot since June.
They've changed, and not, at the same time, our access to supplies has gone down.
And again, part of the reason, Jeff, with the supplies is, like we've explained, we basically get the same supplies that we got a year ago in August. We'll get those in September of this year. That's called allocation, that, that is regulated by law, that's, and regulations. That's not our choice. We, we could order 50 of something and get, if we've had two, our average usage has been two, then that's what we get. To where other healthcare entities, such as, as I understand, the Department of Health, EMS, firefighters, those can order whatever bulk they need. We can't do that.
I asked Boone Hospital if that would be a barrier for them to come to Cole County and they said they had a strong supply chain, they didn't have any issues getting supplies.
That's great, that's great. I don't know who their suppliers are, but-
Could I ask them that question?
I, I have no idea. Now, we can get them. We can get masks and things, but rather than paying seven cents a piece, we're right now paying $7.56 a piece. So you kind of press yourself out of the market pretty quickly. And we're still, you know, being very careful with the supplies that we're using, because we don't know what this fall is going to bring us. It, it is different because we have more numbers, but we're better staffed now than we were in June, too. We had no idea, we, you know, we were kind of hoping that by this time, we were, the numbers would be down, and maybe we didn't even need the test site anymore.
Well, Russia has a vaccine, and Putin tried it on his daughter. Of course, she's now his son, but, so there, there are some side effects, there are some side effects, but-
Where do you get this stuff?
Well, that's what he said. He said he tried it on his daughter, and it worked.
Well, let's not give up your job here. But regardless, well, basically, what, and we have talked about this as a group, we really want Cole County involved in this as much as we can, because we think that you're kind of the community health leaders, and that's why we think that's important. But if you can't, we get that, too. And then what we will do is, we probably do a joint venture, we've had some suggestions of different things we can do, fully recognizing that we probably have to have our own for this, that then, the venture would take at least 90 days to set that up, which puts us kind of far into this, but we can't continue to sustain where we are.
Let us talk with Christie and Donna and-
And we want to be part of this.
And you realize CARE money, I mean, right now, CARE money, you know, we can, we've got it until December 31st, and then it's gone. Now, that's not saying that they won't come up with a second allocation, because, you know, so, but I mean, that's, you know, come New Year's, or, yeah, New Year's Eve, we could just close and-
Well, and we don't know that it'll be the same testing that they're recommending then either.
Yeah.
I mean, that certainly has changed. But there are a lot more places getting the point-of-care, which is a much quicker turnaround for patients as well.
Is it accurate? Are they saying that it's inaccurate?
We have a couple of different tests now, a couple of different companies have tests now that are about 90%. So that's probably the best way to go, but it's an expensive way to go.
Yeah.
So, we want to partner with you guys, and, you know, Christie has been great trying to work with us in this, and I know that her hands are tied on a lot of things, but again, I think that there's a way through for the community to see healthcare providers as being together on this and wanting to provide the best for the communities that they live in.
Well, appreciate you hearing us out.
Mm-hmm.
Let us know what you come up with, I guess. Anything else?
I don't think so. Thanks for the information.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for listening. Good, good conversation.
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it. Good day.
Yeah.
See you, guys.
Did you ever get BKD on?
Julie, are you up and ready? We are ready. Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
You got a list for us?
Yep. This is what? Julie, I'm passing out the agenda.
I just printed it off this morning.
Thank you.
All right, Julie, I don't know if you want to start with the ones for approval, or if you want to go ahead and start with your agenda.
Yeah, just to touch quickly on the agenda, just a quick update, our online application is still slated to be up and going next week. We, I'm actually hoping to send it out to Debbie and Kristen this afternoon, or, oh, hold on. Leanne just told me my video's not showing, which is odd, because it was earlier.
We can see you, there you are.
Yeah, you were kind of frozen.
Um, thank you, Leanne. But anyway, so yeah, so we're hoping to send the link out to Debbie and Kristen for testing this week, early next week, and then our goal will do a, you know, write up like we've done before on our press release language, letting everybody know, and then, you know, we'll be able to move forward with the online application. Does anybody have any questions in general on that?
And you guys remember Phase Two, that was the application process?
Yes, yes.
That'd be online, and it'd be, we feel a lot smoother, because it would go through the computer software program that they're setting up, and so all of it would go directly into that.
Now, we have people waiting, so I just keep telling them, wait, patience, patience.
Our goal is getting closer.
Yep, it's finally here, so, so yeah, it'll also relieve Debbie and Kristen quite a bit, because BKD will have direct access, and we'll just be able to take those applications and move them forward through that processing component. And then it'll also track and keep all of the documents together, so that when we get ready to do our reporting, we'll have that as well. So, that's all good news. A second thing, then, I wanted to turn it over to Leanne to talk about the application recommendations, or Debbie, you or Kristen may want to provide that. And then the last thing, we'll save some time on, is we do have a recommended Phase Two re-allocation methodology, similar to what we did initially, and we'll talk more about that at the end.
And that's the latest sheet right here.
So I'm going to do one real quickly, one that we approved on Tuesday. It was for the respirator fit testers. The amount approved on Tuesday was $35,950. There was some shipping or freight on that, so the actual cost came out to be $36,063. So just so Lynn has that in her notes, that the amount approved on Tuesday changed slightly due to that freight. And then I think Debbie's going to handle the new ones for today.
No, you are.
I am? Okay. So you guys have a list there in front of you. The first one there is 448 acrylic dust shields for the total amount of $7,200. Again, those are estimates at the moment, so we're making those purchases. It could change slightly depending on freight or something like that, but the estimated cost of that is $7,200.
Any conflicts here?
Um, no.
Guys, good? I move that we approve grant request C dash zero two, or zero three dash zero two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, the next four, we're going to go through our internal requests, some of these we have talked about previously. The first one, 76 Halo battery-powered pressurized respirators for EMS. Matt did approach you guys previously about that. Total cost, $73,247.
Good.
Yes.
I move that we approve grant request D dash zero three dash zero four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next request goes along with that. We had to purchase some PPE storage bags along with those respirators to keep them separated once they've been used and things like that. Total cost, $6,083.
Good.
Yep.
I move that we approve grant request D dash zero three dash zero eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next two kind of go together, they're both the same thing, just different quantities. They are handheld disinfectant sprayers that are going on the ambulances to disinfect those once they transport a patient. We purchased two previously, we now want to make sure that we have one on each vehicle. So that first one is two handheld disinfectant sprayers for $3,090.
Good.
Yeah, and as Matt pointed out, these can be used not just on the ambulances, so they can be used for other-
Right. I move that we approve grant request D dash zero three dash zero five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one there is the additional 11, so that there's one in each vehicle of the handheld disinfectant sprayers for $16,638.
Good.
Yep.
I move that we approve grant request D dash zero three dash zero nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that on there? See, mine doesn't have a number.
Yeah, here.
Is that the updated one?
Yep.
We'll update that, Kristen. That one was missing the number, D0309.
Okay.
So, are they able to buy these, or are we going to have to, or do we have to have an emergency declaration to buy them, being overrun about, what we're buying?
I think the Halo sprayers, we've already been through, and they possibly are sole sourceer off of a cooperative, because we have a purchase order out there for those already. The disinfectant sprayers, I think, I'm not sure if, Matt, are you on the line?
Yeah, so the, the Halos were, we'd already gotten the fit. The sprayers are not under a cooperative, so we would either, right now you're looking at, by the week time to get to them. So if possible, going under the winter operations, that we can get that, because 45 days longer with this kit and can down the road, and we need to get these on board. So if we can get an emergency purchase, that would be helpful in order to try to allocate these as quick, or to source these as quickly as possible.
Good question, Jeff. We need to ask you to declare that emergency, so we can get that going.
I'm good.
I'm good, too, yeah.
Same thing on the acrylic dust shields, they are over the $6,000 mark. Those are for school, we would like to move forward as quickly as possible, if we can do that as an emergency purchase as well.
Yes.
I move that we declare an emergency purchase for the acrylic dust shields and the handheld disinfectant sprayers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, Julie, I think we're done with that, so I'll let you take back over the methodology part of what we're doing here.
All right, so everybody should have two pages, and what we're going to do is, we're going to walk through kind of our original methodology that we talked about, and then as we get ready to open up Phase Two, which would be the online application, just, we've put together some recommendations for you all to think about and talk about, and then, you know, we can adjust those as we need to. So the first page that you're going to see there has, again, it's got, you know, the projects so far that have been approved. If you'll notice in the dark gray area, that's, those were the recommendations for today. The kind of lighter shaded gray section, those are items that are review pending, meaning that we'll probably review those and then make recommendations on those Tuesday. And then items in the lightest gray section at the bottom, these are kind of some of the original estimates that have been put together over the last few weeks. We expect those to come through at some point in time. They may not come through next week, and it says as of 8/27. What that means is, as of today, this is what we know, you know, this is a very fluid situation, things change daily. But kind of what we know today, these are some additional costs. And I'll, I'll go through each one of these, but just kind of how this lays out, the first column, obviously, are the projects, the second column, the description, the third column are the requests, again, what the working group recommended, and then what the commissioners have approved, and then obviously, taking into account, we'll update it based- and then obviously, taking into account, we'll update it based on today's approval. So in this first document, you can see Phase One really focused on the schools, and so we had an initial allocation of a million five, and you can see how that broke down, a million one sixty for public schools, three hundred and forty thousand for private schools. And then you can see each of those negative numbers down the page. Those are requests that have either been granted, or then when you get to that section, the lightest gray section, so for example, we had allotted, you know, a million one sixty for public schools. Really not anything has come through yet. I think maybe just a couple of things, and so based on the actual allocation methodology, you know, they would still be eligible to apply for up to a million fifty-three thousand seven hundred. And what that means is that from that initial allocation of one million one sixty, if you look at the very bottom, where it says projected Phase Two remaining balance, if all those funds were spent, that would basically be a hundred and six thousand three hundred dollars that, you know, could either be, you know, reallocated amongst all the different areas, or could go back into the schools. Again, it's just kind of, think about it, similar to de-obligated money at that point.
And some of that change was due to the actual populations for schools we verified, so some of the numbers changed slightly based on that actual population.
And exclude some that were in different counties.
That's just for public.
Then the private school column, that's the column where the county is purchasing on behalf of the private schools, again, based on enrollment. And so, you know, you can see, the initial allocation was three hundred and forty thousand. You can see some of those items that have since been approved, and then again, that leaves in that lightest gray section, a balance of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand two fifty-two, that would still be available for application during Phase Two. And again, sorry, do I have a question?
No.
No, you coughed.
Okay. So, overall, Phase One is that column, total schools, you see that all kind of adds up. And then, before I go into Phase Two, I just, does anybody have any questions on the school section?
No.
So then, the next section was kind of what we called other reimbursements, which would have been, you know, cities, it could be nonprofits, it could be hospitals. At that point, we had initially set aside two million one. You can see there, we have a slight amount, and again, that's review pending for, I believe that's a nonprofit, asking for some help for unemployment insurance, so we'll be reviewing that over the next few days. And then, as you may remember, Jefferson City had also requested some funding, but we've yet to receive that formal application, so we've not acted on that at this point. So, kind of at this point, without taking into consideration, Page Two will be the county, which we'll, we'll go in and talk more about that, but kind of at this point, we have two million thirty-seven thousand available, that would be in that application phase. And again, this will be some things we can talk about. But does that make sense, how that lays out?
Yes.
I think so, Julie.
All right, and so then let's move to Page Two. Now I realize the print is a little small. So for Page Two, what this is really showing, again, you know, the first few columns just shows again how the, all the amounts were approved. And then there's this section that's called internal county procurement. And so these are the requests that we've either approved through the commissioners, or they have review pending, or again, some monies that had initially been identified to be spent later, which again, is that lightest gray section. So, so you can see, we've divided these out into EMS. Then we have what's called community use, meaning that, like for example, on these respirator testers, and I'm sure Matt could probably talk more to this point, but my understanding is, you know.
Antibody testing, we would also consider those as community use. I mean, they're doing contact tracing for everyone in the county. Their antibody testing was for all first responders, so it's, it's not just particular to the health department, it is for whole county itself. So really, we would consider both of those health department ones, community use at the moment.
Great, and I'll, I'll update that to be reflected. Also, you can see the sheriff's department had a component there. The other departments, those are more internal departments, those are going to be like the, I believe there was some items needed for the collector office, maybe the recorder's office. Debbie and, yeah, Kristen, you may want to touch on that.
You'll see a few more come through, so like the assessors' shields they put up, the windows you guys put in the commission and the clerk, those kinds of items that each of those smaller departments needed to open their office back up.
Public administrators.
Yeah.
And then that, that last column there would be for the cores. Currently, you don't have anything, but if, if they were to need, you know, some items, we wanted to have a category for that as well. So overall, you can see what we're calling internal needs, which obviously still benefits the county as a whole. We had originally talked about three point six million dollars in that initial Phase One. You can see how each of these items have been spent against that total. Again, you can see the review pending. We've got some requests there, that you'll, you'll see those come across in the next week. And then, as we've talked about, maybe any future items identified that would be paid by the county at this point. So all of these totals, you know, that, that total leaves a balance of two point three million, well, sorry, it leaves a balance of being allocated, you know, there's, it's two point three million, but you can kind of see each department, you know, really didn't have an allocation attached to it. So our recommendation at this point would be to go ahead and allocate, you know, seven hundred thousand to EMS, two hundred thousand for community use, four hundred thousand for health department, a hundred thousand for the sheriff's department, fifty thousand for the other departments, and a hundred thousand for potential court needs. So it would be taking the internal kind of leftover, from that two million three fifty-five, we would allocate a million five fifty amongst those programs, it's really money that's already been either identified or, or approved. And then that would leave, for internal county needs, a total of eight hundred and five thousand dollars. So I kind of wanted to stop there and see if there's any questions, if anyone thinks these are high or low, we need to make adjustments. And then we can kind of go back and talk more specifically related to the online application, if we want to do specific allocations, or if we just want to leave it open at the two million dollar mark, and, you know, see what type of request we give in. So I'm going to stop there, see what questions you have.
Matt?
Hey, Kristen. So the only thing was, some of the PPE, we need to look also at putting in a joint, because we've been providing and purchasing like suits and the N ninety-fives and things like that for the other agencies as well, so I did want to point out that those allocated costs, we probably need to put into that joint as well, because it's not just within our department. We've also been, especially in the initial rollout, was we pushed all that out to all the departments as well. So there's just something to put in that column as well.
So Matt, what you're talking about, I think, is that original hundred thousand dollars, the emergency purchases that we've made, it's actually following, falling in that total internal needs, but it's not allocated to any particular place yet.
It's not like gray and gray.
Yeah, on the most part, right? So there's some that, right, so we're still bringing some things in that we're currently using under our medical purchasing, like our medical supply budget, and we're getting them, and then as we do it, we have to push them out. So the PPE at large, especially the suits, are probably going to be the most expensive item of that. We're pushing them out as we get them. We just got a pretty decent shipment in yesterday, I believe it was, and so as those come out, we're pushing them out as we restock. So we're trying to keep a track of, you know, here's the, here's the suits, or whatever that PPE is, but it's kind of a free-for-all, if you will. We're not limiting, that no department can come and get anything. So if they need it, we replace it. An example would be, you know, the fire department will come in once a week, and they'll resupply from our stock what they used during that timeframe.
So I would see that falling into that community use. It may be a number that has to grow eventually from that additional eight hundred thousand that's left there, but that, that to me would be that community use. It's for the county as a whole. We're helping the other agencies in the county. It's not just particularly for one department internal, but we're making that purchase.
Right, that's what I just wanted to point out, for those, the ones that are, that'll be coming through like that.
Okay, and we need to separate that invoice out to the particular, so we keep track of that, also the what we use versus what we give out.
So that's, we track it, but that's kind of a fluid situation as far as that. We know totality, if we can go back and see what we have on hand. We do a daily tracker on usage, but it's more of, how many did we use, now what agency did we give it to? Again, because it's kind of a community pot of, hey, if you need it, come get it, this type of thing. So, I mean, we can start tracking it per agency, if we need to.
I guess, Matt, the question is, right now, you're paying for that out of your emergency line, not out of your regular supply line, correct?
I'll have to verify that. Some of that is coming out of, the initial one is coming out of our medical line as we get them. They should be transferred over. I'll verify that to make sure, it should be coming out of the emergency line.
Okay.
That would be.
But I'll verify that. I don't want to tell you wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, we just wanted to be sure that it's not anything that has already been budgeted, because that would not be eligible for the CARES Act.
Hi, you're promising.
So I was just trying to follow the worksheet here, and so it looks like, I'm having a hard time. If we allocate, say, one point five five or one point six, that's out of the internal county procurement, which we had allotted three point six million, and so I'm rounding here a little bit. So that leaves me with two million left in internal county procurement in Phase Two. She's kind of totaled all this up, and so she's got the schools, or whoever did this, and I'm not trying to blame anybody, but the schools was one point six, and now we've kind of got a running total here, and I'm just trying to keep it separate. Phase One, Phase, or internal county procurement, then Phase Two, and then contingency. Am I, am I missing something there?
Yeah, let me touch on that. Right, so when we originally looked at this, we had the one point six million for the schools, two million was what we thought would be potential online applications, and three point six million was for internal county needs. The one point eight million was contingency funds, which gets us to the nine million.
Right.
Then, based on all of the current spending that we've identified, we now have, you know, if you look at the school section, they have what's currently left, based on what we've identified, would, they only have about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars left.
Right.
So it went from one point five million down to a hundred and forty-one thousand. We have two million remaining for the online application. And then, related to the internal department needs, those numbers have gone from three point six million to two point three.
I'm lost.
In total.
And the internal, is it the one point five plus the eight oh five? Is that where you're coming up?
Yeah, exactly.
This one and this one.
And so.
So that's if you allocate those the way she's telling.
In total, we've got nine million dollars that we originally received, and at the end of Phase One, we're at six point three million. So another way to think about it is if you wanted to reallocate your six million into different categories. And if that helps.
Julie, I just want to simplify it here. So we have one point six in the schools, and then we have the one point five in internal, but again, we still have another eight hundred and five thousand in there.
Exactly.
So then that's.
Eight hundred and five thousand in where?
In the internal county needs at the bottom, that hasn't been allocated at all.
Yeah, it's.
Phase Two together.
Those two together, well. So if the Phase Two allocation is one point five, and then where's, I don't get the remaining balance of eight hundred and five, because we had three point six million dollars.
So three point six minus all of these gets you to the two three. She's asking today if you want to set aside these items in blue here, so another one point five. If you take that out of the two point three, that leaves the eight hundred and five left to allocate.
If you want to just all leave it in internal funds, we can do that. We just didn't know if you wanted to try to split out the individual department allocations and keep kind of what a remaining internal county amount was.
So the subtotal of the requests, of the total internal needs request is eight hundred and five. Is that what I get?
No.
I didn't add it up.
No.
What?
It's the two point three, right?
No, it's the three point six minus the two point three. So it's listing those out individually here and subtracting them off. Three point six minus these requests leaves you two point three. She's asking if you want to allocate these out by department, so you would allocate out a one point five, leaving an eight point five not allocated.
So you have two point three in requests right now?
No.
Okay, this amount, if you subtract all these out, you'll have that.
Two point three left.
Yes, two point three left from there. And then these, she's asking, do you want to budget these limits? If so, then we'll have to add the one point five.
Right.
And then you'd still have the eight hundred.
And that's just an allocation. It doesn't mean that it can't change, it's just.
So if.
Plus this. This plus this plus this should equal that.
Yeah.
Think of the one point five as like a proposed budget for the remaining departments.
And I, I get that, I mean, and I'm good with that, I mean, in theory, but if, if I have three point six and I take one point five out of it, it leaves me two point one, or one point six, so.
Yeah, so to get to your remaining, yeah, to get to your remaining balance, look at, essentially EMS has nineteen thousand left to spend, community use has a hundred and sixty-three thousand left to spend, health has three seven, three eighteen.
Right.
The sheriff, ninety-five, and kind of what would be considered unallocated is the eight oh five.
Okay. Unallocated out of the one point five.
No, unallocated out of the three point six.
No?
No.
That's not true. Let's talk, let's talk EMS. So the requests from EMS are five eighty-one or six eighty-seven oh nine?
Six eighty-seven oh nine, because she's breaking it up on what's been approved versus what's pending review.
Okay.
So each of those sections total separately.
Right.
So the total requests from EMS at the moment is six hundred and eighty thousand seven oh nine.
Right, so if we had, gave them an allocation of seven hundred thousand dollars, it'd leave them twenty grand.
Yes.
Okay, so all these on the dark gray area at the bottom would be balances of funds that hadn't been allocated. So out of the one point five five, all the requests that are in here, it would leave eight hundred and five thousand five ninety-five out of the one point five five in allocation.
No, because those don't total. There's still a pot of money that wasn't allocated to any particular department or thing yet.
So just go back.
So just go back.
I don't know how you guys do math, but your math don't work.
It works going down this column. It works going down each column, but it doesn't work going across, because there's an unallocated portion.
So basically, in EMS, 700,000, all their requests add up to 680. So there's another 19,000 unallocated, if you agree with the 700,000.
Right.
And if you, in the community usage, 200,000. Left of that is the 163. We're going to move some stuff over into that, so that'll change a little.
Yeah, and all those in that internal procurement, that 19, 291, the 163, 937, the 317, 634, all those together equal 805, 595.
No.
They don't?
Yeah, so, so let me try it this way. So think of it from 3.6 million.
So 3.6.
About it, 3.6 million is what we started with. We have identified 2.4 million in spending. So that leaves 1.2 million, and that 1.2 million is allocated amongst all of those departments, including the remaining unallocated portion of 800,000. So I do understand, it probably, it is confusing the way I've listed it there, but essentially, that's, that's the math. It's 3.6 minus 2.4 equals 1.2, and of that 1.2, each of those dark gray sections is what is the remaining allocation for those individual departments.
Even Harry says, am I right? I mean, I mean, he's the auditor. I mean, 3.6 minus 1.55 equals 2,500,000. I mean, I don't.
But you're not, see the, the lightest gray area there, the 423, 250? It's not included in any of those columns. So like BKD's contract and things, she, she needs another column there to make it go across. Right now, they total down each column, but there is an unallocated portion, and some of that is spent.
Okay. So 1.55 plus 423, 250, still don't get you to 2.355.
But your 1.55 is not spent. It's what you're allocating.
I know, I know. But I'm just saying, if this light gray portion at the bottom where you don't have it included, that doesn't equal 423, 250, 385, 410. It's close. Yep, it's exactly 423, 250. So 1.55 plus 423, 250 is a little shy of 2 million dollars.
So. So at, so at the end of the day, the question on the table is, if we had 3.6 million, we have 2.4 million spent, then that leaves us with 1.2. And of that 1.2, do you want to allocate that amongst the departments, or just continue to let the department spend, and we will just continue to track it?
So I'm tired of fighting about the numbers, because, I mean, they are what they are, but anyway. Do we want to allow those allocations for the internal departments?
I mean, the other thing, let me, I can update it real quick and just send it to you. That might be helpful.
As long as it's not edged and stung.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's still.
It's a fluid document. I mean, the request today about testing, we see that being a community needs thing. So that could change that number depending on what that looks like. I mean, it's going to be a fluid document. This is just asking right now, do you want to allocate some of these things out so that there's a dollar amount that that working group is looking towards? That we're trying to work towards, and then we're going to free up some of that contingency. We're going to free up some of that additional school money that is not spent.
Right.
We're going to move things around as we go. But right now, do you want to make that allocation so we have a number that we're working towards for some of those internal departments?
Because right now, we are approving things as they come in, kind of first come, first served. So there may be other priorities that you want to have in place for some of those departments that may not have identified a need just yet.
So I guess you're wanting to say, are we going to have a free-for-all, go and keep spending, or do we want to rattle some of it? So when the crap hits the fan, or we got a little extra built up, that's where I would prefer to go, but is that?
Right, and we don't want everyone to think that you have an unlimited budget to spend. We want you to be, work on your needs and your priorities, and this is the amount that's allocated to you. It's not just, hey, anything you can find, go buy, because we have money.
I'm going to think the other thing to think about too, is that obviously, you know, you put an allocation out there, and now everybody's got a target that they're trying to spend, and so, I mean, I don't want them to think that either. It's that, look, if you, if you need something, put in a request, and we'll fulfill the request on an as-needed basis. But don't just try to go spend your whole allotment.
Right, right.
Yeah, they will. They will.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and it works backwards too. If you don't give them an allotment, I think I have an unlimited budget, and I'm going to just keep going, so.
Sure.
I, I mean, you have to find a happy medium there, and I, that's why I think it's going to be a fluid document. It's going to keep changing. But right now, we're looking for some guidance on where do we want to stay within at the moment, and then come back later, and do we want to reallocate again and change things around?
If you think of it as a budget where it's kind of a goal, knowing that if situation changes, you can always go back and change it again. And certainly, we're not married to any of those numbers. If you think those numbers should adjust somewhat, now is the time to talk about that.
Would courts and Pringer Center, would they fall under the same, or?
I, I think they possibly could.
Yeah, I talked to Judge Joyce, that we really need.
And, and we do have, we do have some asks from the courts. They're in the process of, of making sure we have the correct paperwork and that application filled out. They sent a request yesterday, so, I mean, this, again, is an ever-changing. We have requests that have were received since yesterday when this was made up, so it's an ever-changing document. Again, that working group's looking for some guidance on what your guys' opinions are, so we can keep bringing those requests to you.
I'm fine either way. I don't, I'd say both ways.
I mean, like I said, that, the request this morning about testing could change that community use fairly quickly. And that may be something we're back here next week saying, hey, we really need to move more money into here. I think it's going to be a constant ask, but we're looking for, are you okay with this at the moment? And it changing later?
What was it? Wasn't the total 9.3 something?
It is. It's in that very last column on, in the same internal procurement page, that very. Yeah.
Oh, it's 9, 9,000, 9 million, 3,000?
Yep.
Okay. I was thinking it was 9.3 million, but.
Stop leaving it as is. You're leaving the remainder of the money in there.
Right, so all we're really asking for today is that Phase Two allocation in the internal county procurement. Because we haven't really opened Phase Two yet. We're kind of set on Phase One being that school allocation you've already approved. We're looking for some guidance on that internal procurement. And then, again, if that online application is up and running in the next week or two, that Phase Two will open, and that will change the look of things again. And we will eventually start moving around money, the closer we get to the end of the year, moving some of the contingency out to be spent, so that we meet that end-of-the-year deadline. And also, some of those remaining balances in the schools, once we have all those school requests, we may be reallocating the leftover funds in there back to another category. And right now, it's not set in stone that the 805,000 that's not allocated in, in internal county procurement won't move to a Phase Two for other reimbursements. It is a moving document even between the sections at this point.
Okay, so I'm fine leaving it where it's at right now?
Okay.
That, okay, that's right, answer, or?
Well, I, we're just looking for that guidance. Like, where are we kind of trying to stay within at the moment, and then?
To make sure I understood it right.
If we have bigger asks that come in, and we need to talk about changing it around, we can do that. But we're looking for that guidance internally at the moment, kind of where we want to stay within at the time being.
Maybe I'm making this harder than it actually is, but I got myself running a circle chasing my tail.
Yeah.
But, but I think I got what you're saying, but leave it in there, and it is a living, breathing document.
Right.
You can change it.
Right. So really, what we're asking you at the moment is that Phase Two allocation in that internal county procurement. We kind of want to know if you're okay with those numbers at the moment.
I'm good with them as a placeholder.
Okay.
Can we, can we get the numbers to work mathematically for me, please?
Yes, we will add a, a column for unallocated or whatever in that internal, so it goes across as well as down.
Right.
It just didn't have enough.
Yeah, I'll just add a subtotal, and I'll also add another column, so.
Yeah, so it will work both across and down there going forward.
And then we'll have a, just like in the Phase One, we'll have a balance, a projected ending balance of stuff that we don't see that, that's going to get spent. And maybe more may not get spent, we don't know, but then we can move that to Phase Two or wherever, and add, add that funding to that.
Right.
Okay.
So yes, as we get further down the road, the, the items that are not being used will be reallocated to other areas. Um, so Julie, one quick question while we have you on the phone. I know right now, the deadline for the schools is August the 31st. I think the working group's kind of wanting to extend that, that date to the end of September.
Yeah, I mean, um, you know, our recommendation is just essentially, it just moves into the online application phase. So they still have the ability, you know, to apply based on the original allotments that they received or the estimates that we calculated.
Okay.
Um, so they don't have to try to rush to get everything in by the end of the month.
Right, and I think that we're going to keep that allotment there for them. We may get down the road at a certain point in time. If they have not requested, we may start to reallocate. So we may give them a harder deadline at some point, but right now, to move that deadline to end of September.
Yeah, agreed. Yeah, that makes sense.
Julie, do you and Leanne have any other questions for the commission right now?
No, I will, I've got this updated, so I'll send this to you right, you know, right after we hang up.
Okay, do you guys have any questions for BKD at the moment?
Okay. All right, Julie.
Thank you all.
Leanne, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just thought I'd take the opportunity to give you a little update. Chris and Jen have been going through our data and working on the website for how we're reporting the COVID cases, and we're going to separate out the cases that are affiliated with the long-term care facilities, not the staff, but the residents. Because, you know, they're separate. We get a lot of questions about it, and I know that the long-term care facilities are reporting it on their websites, but we're going to separate it out on our website. And so this weekend, as Chris and Jen are working on it, it's going to change our total number of cases, because they're going to be separated out. So if you add them together, you still get our total, but it's just going to change the display of how it looks. And then Chris did last week start doing that weekly report that shows the seven-day rolling average. He'll continue to do that each week, but I decided to let you know that all the cases will be accounted for. We're just going to report them differently, because the state reports them separately, so we want to make it easier for people to understand. I also wanted to let you know that our amount of community spread has not changed. We're still below 30%. So the majority of our cases are still associated with contact to a known case and some travel. And then, of course, we have the, the long-term care cases. And, and, you know, the majority of those were at J.C. Manor, because, you know, it was reported out, but we do have some at other facilities too. And once they get a case, one case, they do like, they test everybody. So those will be separated out, so I think it'll be a little bit more easy to understand. They're trying to do that by the end of the week. So hopefully, by Friday, when they put out this weekly report, it'll, it'll be separated, but they're working on it. Like I said, with DHSS switching over to the new EpiTrak system and how we're getting our data, it's just taking longer, um, yeah, it's taking longer when we get the cases. It takes longer to go into the new system. It takes longer to get the data. The phone numbers aren't there. Just the whole process is more arduous than it was before. And that's why we did report that on Friday afternoons, we're just going to cut back on, on a few services. We'll still do TV reads and things like that, but the nurses need that extra time to do that data entry into the system. And, and not everybody can do that, because not everybody has access to the system and understands how to do it. And the system just takes time. Like, it's, it's like having dial-up. Donna was showing me, you click on a tab and you wait, and you wait, and then it pulls up. So it's just time, very time-consuming. I did want to give your report back about our cases, and we are still getting a lot of people who are asymptomatic or have very, very mild symptoms. I do anticipate some problems with school starting, because I don't think that parents are going to like having to quarantine their healthy kids for 14 days if they're identified as a contact to a positive case. We had one this week, and on further investigation, we determined that the child was not a contact, but the parent was not happy, because they didn't think it was fair that their child was going to have to stay home for two weeks and, or 14 days in mid-school when they were not sick, but they were identified as a contact. So I do anticipate that being a problem.
So right now, anybody who, who is a contact is quarantined for 14 days at the schools?
Everybody. It's every, yeah, everybody. See, that's how it's been, so I anticipate that people are going to be upset, especially when critical. Yeah, I mean, critical infrastructure, if someone is critical infrastructure, like if they work in a meatpacking plant, or they're a doctor, or there's several other categories, they can go back to work if they wear a surgical mask. The kids can't go back to school, and they have to social distance others, but the kids can't go back to school at all. And I think that people are, are going to get upset about that.
Who's rule is that?
CDC.
Okay.
And, and we, and we advise that parent that, you know, he need, and DHSS is the one that is, is asking us to enforce that. So I anticipate that being an issue with parents.
At school, you're in contact with maybe 100 other kids?
No, they are social distancing. They're making them wear a mask in the hallways, the helias, they sit six feet apart. So at school, they are not exposing other people. They are, I mean, the extreme measures that they're taking to prevent exposure between kids, Sam, is outs, it's, it's above and beyond what is necessary. The school, we've met with the schools every two weeks this summer, and they are taking such extreme measures to make sure exposure does not happen.
So where are these contacts?
Oh, they run the car together. It wasn't, it didn't happen at school. It was a car ride. So the schools, I mean, I will have to give, you know, a lot of credit to schools, because they're do, they want the kids in the seats. They want to do, and they're doing everything they can to keep them as safe as possible during the school. Even, this kid even played a sport, and the coaches, there was no exposure at practice. There was no exposure with the, the coaches, because they're doing everything right. So the schools are doing, they're going beyond. So the schools are going, they're going beyond what they really need to do, because they want to keep school open. So we're going to do our part, and they all have a plan if they have a positive case. Hopefully, they all know what to do. Of course, we've got calls the first week, oh my gosh, someone went home with a fever. It's like, look at your plan, work your plan, you know, because that's what we developed them for, so we want to do everything we can to keep the schools going and keep the kids in the seats.
I would bet Columbia Public Schools will be closed by this Friday.
They're not even open till after Labor Day. They're not even open, right. They're like, they're starting.
That's your right, say.
They're right, and they're doing a hybrid now, so.
They were at 47, they sort of, when it gets to 50 then, but they were, last night was 47.
Right, but they're not open until after, and they're going to do a hybrid model, so they're going to have their kids go to school two days a week, and then the other three, they'll be, you know.
Yeah, they won't ever open, yeah, they went to September.
Kids would want to go to school.
They do, they do.
Yeah.
They're happy.
I remember back in the day, we would have loved a 14-day quarantine. You want me to stay at home 14 days?
Were you with me? Do you want me to list you as a contact?
See, we never start school till after Labor Day, when I went. Got out the old mule, rode it to school.
You didn't have to walk uphill both ways two times?
No, no, we did take our sleds to school when it's snow.
We got anything else?
No. Just reminiscing.
Just reminiscing. Did you walk uphill both ways?
Yeah.
Moral drive, there weren't, you had to walk down the hill to school, but.
All right, I'm going to be standing recess till 4:30.
Second.
All in favor?